All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board, County Commissioners, check-in Monday, July 15, 2024. It's 2:35 PM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Fournier, Commissioner Mihia Edwards and Klaus all here, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder. Public virtual attendance available through our Thurston County YouTube channel. We have a two-hour session to cover our standing topics and some specific topics. First up though is reports on external boards and commissions. And we've been on recess, but not all of our boards and commissions were on recess, so are there Commissioner reports from external boards? Just after two hours of Capitol Lake, but that's also on the agenda, so maybe we can defer that one.
I'm waiting until Capitol Lake.
Okay. Anybody else have a recent Commissioner Claus?
I just have a couple. I had an Orca meeting last week on the 10th, and something to note is that our burn ban in Thurston County was effective as of this last Saturday, the 13th. And that applies to residential yard waste and land clearing burns. And for the public's benefit, there's more information on the county website on the Board of County Commissioners page, if there's any interest in looking into that. I also had a Jazzcom meeting on the 8th, and we are moving forward with the next phase of the new facility, which is the development of the concept for the building. So they'll be having a concept drawn up for that. And the next steps following the concept development, or actually probably ongoing with the concept development, are staff-to-staff discussions regarding the funding mechanism for the new facility. And then there was also a Regional Housing Council meeting, which Commissioner Mihia attended for me as the alternate. And I know one of the items that was discussed is on our agenda for tomorrow's meeting for approval, which was the funding item. I didn't write it down, but it was on this morning's agenda as well. And then if Commissioner Mihia, if there's anything to add, I don't think that there were any huge topics at that meeting, so that's all I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Claus on those? I guess on Jazzcom, I mean, funding discussion is like, where does that stand? I mean, is there, I mean, we were doing, when I was in Jazzcom like five years ago, we were having a high-level funding discussion about a new facility, and I just, has it, has it gotten any more specific, I guess is my question?
Not yet, but that's kind of where the direction we're heading in terms of the conversation. A council member partially from Olympia was there, and she requested that as, as staff from Lacey and Animal Services move forward with these staff discussions, that they reach out to Olympia first because they're discussing a ballot measure for a new levy lift, and that if they have any updates they need to make to their budget related to the new facility for Jazzcom, that they would need to know pretty much immediately. So I think that Lacey and Animal Services staff will be talking with the City of Olympia first, and they'll kind of just be making their rounds around the different jurisdictions to discuss how the funding might work. But there wasn't anything specific discussed at the meeting. We mostly just talked about what the concept development would look like, and then at the very end, it was just mentioned that the next step is to talk about funding mechanisms. So we didn't really get into the nitty-gritty of it, but I think that's coming next.
Anyone else?
Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met. I don't want to get too much into it because there'll be a presentation coming up on the additional 2%, which the advisory committee is recommending. The Shales Basin Partnership, we met and talked about water, reclaimed water, and efforts to capture reclaimed water throughout the basin and throughout the state. Grand Mount Rochester Chamber meeting was canceled. And then there was a TPB meeting where they went over and upcoming funding opportunities that are being made aware of.
Okay. I had a couple of things that were covered for me while I was gone. I guess I would ask, did you make the timber caucus?
I did. I was there.
Is there anything of note to come out of that?
Nope. Not really.
And then I know there was like a three cities or mayor's meeting.
There was a mayor's meeting. I was a little late because I was getting a tour of the fairgrounds. There was a lot of discussion about a very specific tree in the Ton Water area. That really took up most of the conversation.
Yeah, with timbers, there was just discussion over the DNR programs and really initiatives, but there was nothing really specific.
Okay.
That would apply to, to us. It was a joy to volunteer to cover for that meeting a lot.
Sorry about that. Can I just be a thank you for your service?
All I'm saying is next year I will for sure be out in the like summer recess. Every year I see that and I stay and then I am, my calendar ends up getting packed.
It's always three very informative hours at the Timber County's caucus.
Well, for me, I attended, I think one thing that's very exciting, the Quarry Pool in Tenino opened up. And so I was able to attend that and kind of give some comments on behalf of the county. I know a lot of our staff, Alex and Tom Webster, did a lot of work in regards to CDBG and making sure that was success. So I was there for that, and I want to say congrats to Commissioner Fournier because I, I put a lot of hard work into that and.
Was there a crowd, I'm sure?
Yeah, it was, there was a, you know, a huge line, and it got really packed, and it was, you know, the kids were super excited, and it's very nice. So for anyone who hasn't checked it out, please go check out the Quarry Pool. It's very nice. Attended WASCAC, the general meeting. Just a heads up, at the county leaders conference, it's going to be a rough meeting. It was already a rough meeting for WASCAC. It was supposed to take two hours, ended up taking more like four. There's a lot of high tensions in regards to the direction that we're going to go in. Right now, basically, it is, there's been another proposal of weighted voting. And doing it almost like we do on the TRPC, where more than, if a county decides that something has to be weighted, someone else has to kind of second it. Another county has to second it. And there's just been a lot of, of course, smaller counties do not want that because then they're saying that King, Pierce, and Snohomish are going to control, you know, control that, and it's going to be heavily weighted. And, but you know, just now with how the Legislative LSC is working with the different, you know, urban priorities, rural priorities, and general membership priorities, kind of trying to ease those concerns. However, there's just a lot of distrust and a lot of concerns. And so while the bylaws were passed by the board, I believe that at the general membership meeting, it's going to be, it's going to be rough. So just a heads up for board members to get ready for the general membership meeting.
Is there like a timeline, you know, like, like last year it was like, if we don't do X, King County's going to do Y. Like, are we up against some kind of thing where if we don't take action, Snohomish and Pierce are out or something?
Yeah.
Okay. So they want to see what we're going to do in November?
Yeah.
And those are the two counties?
Yep. Pierce and, so King's already out. And Pierce and Snohomish have been working with different members of the bylaws committee to come up with a favorable one. The proposal that's been put forward, like in all honesty, it seems fine, like it just, you know, I think the hope is that of course King and Pierce and Snohomish don't abuse, abuse it, right? But I think the LSC is where the big contention points were, but I was surprised that, you know, I think it was proposed in the, for having it in the board meetings too, and a lot of members were not happy with that either. And so it was just a lot of going around in circles and. So that was fun. Attended the RHC, attended Pack Mountain, Pack Mountain. There are several employment centers that are going to be closing in Lewis, Thurston, and Grace Harbor. And they're still working out what that looks like. I asked for more information for Thurston County and seeing how that's going to affect our region. So just a FYI on that. Mark Friedman is officially retired, so I attended his retirement celebration. So I was really thankful for his years of service for the BHASO. I can't even, oh, the rodeo for intercity transit was also during break. I attended the Roosevelt Tour with Commissioner Fournier, and that was very insightful. We saw dead cows, and it was very hot, and it smelled awful. Attended the Chambers 150th Anniversary, TRPC. Conversation is still about the general regionalizing, like the funding that's coming through for trail funding. And so more conversation on that, did a fairgrounds tour. Attended the open house for the Golden Gavel Project, and there is going to be a ribbon cutting this Wednesday, I believe.
And we can stop arguing about the name because they've, they have a totally new name, right?
Yes.
Sandy Flats?
Yes. Yeah, Sandy, yeah.
Still a golden, that's.
I know, I can, I can't, I'm like, it's.
They need to give us the gavel, put it on the front of the building.
And then also the BHASO, which I attended with Commissioner Claus. There is a facility that is, basically it is move-in ready. The beds are, it would be like, open up over 50 to 60 beds for the region. It's been closed for a while because the previous provider couldn't make ends meet. It just, the operational was not just coming through with the Medicaid reimbursement. So this facility has been closed, but it's been maintained.
In Thurston County?
In Thurston County. And so they're now basically, have decided they don't want to reopen it, so it's up for sale. And so the BHASO is looking to see like, how do we open this facility back up? And they're working with different vendors. I was, I have asked Leonard to kind of touch base with Tom Webster, but you know, we have to touch base with Joe first and kind of get more information on the actual facility. But I was talking with Leonard and Commissioner Claus about maybe the possibility of the home fund, since there's a piece of that that can be used for behavioral health. And so I was like, is that something that can be a plugin? And we make the request to the RHC. Not sure, but we just need to get more information from Joe on what the facility needs are, what, for what demographic will it be used specifically? And so, and we don't know which provider it's going to be. And then there's also the difference, is it just capital needs, you know, to purchase it? Or is it going to be operational ongoing needs? And so there's going to be more information on that, but I just kind of wanted to give a heads up to commissioners about that facility because I, I was very excited when I heard about that possibility of, you know, recovering those beds for, for the needs of our community.
Yeah, Joe would know the answer, but Gary, do you remember that when we had, there was a state passed some funding, and we were talking about the property in Shelton? And I can't remember exactly the parameters of what the money was for, but we were kind of kicking around the idea of, because the, because they had, we already had the property, and it's like, there's a property we own, and we own like the empty lot behind it. And it was like a certain kind of facility that you could get money for from the state if you, and we were like, we were talking about it, and we were like, well, Thurston County, you know, like, would Thurston County Sheriff's be willing to drive folks up to Shelton? You know, if this was a joint project between the two counties and all that? I'm just curious if that somehow that would fit, acquiring a facility and somehow getting it. I think it was for capital though. I think it was, they wanted to create more, I think it was to build things that didn't already exist, so it probably wouldn't fit. But anyway, that would be interesting to see what, what we could do that would fit.
Well, even I think Joe's considered options. One of the options he said, you know, it's like, do we use it for? I was like, what's the biggest need in our community? And he was like, well, there's several. But one of them is like, do we?
Crisis stabilization.
Crisis stabilization, yeah.
We don't have, we have zero.
Yeah.
And what the, and they went to Spokane to look at what was, because there's, yeah, this is like, crisis stabilization, the funding doesn't keep it afloat. But in Spokane, they did a joint thing where they basically did crisis stabilization and something else. I can't remember exactly what it was, that had a different funding source. And by economy of scale between the two, like, the one could help support the other, and they basically had a facility that did crisis stabilization, and it was able to be financially viable because it was combined with this other function, like alcohol detox or something. So there is a possibility to maybe, you know, be creative and, and make the funding work. But you have to sort of think outside the box.
You do. So, and I said 50 to 60 beds. I might be completely, do you remember how many beds?
I think you're right. I believe it was 50, 60 beds.
I was like, I might.
It's funny that I haven't heard of it. It's shuttered, shuttered behavioral health facility.
Yeah, it's, it is, it is a very large facility. And I think the price is around five to six million, so. The location's not on here.
Was it used for that purpose before?
Yeah.
Well, that's a real. Our design, I mean, CMS generally has, one of the limiting factors for a lot of jurisdiction is that they have these 16-bed type of cohort.
Yeah.
And depending on how the facility is designed, I mean, I can see how you can get 60 if you have four 15-bed units, basically. But they like barriers, they like.
It's a weird rule.
Yeah.
And I remark explaining, kind of some kind of artifact of Medicaid original legislation when they were going a certain direction. Now we're not even going that direction, but that rule still confines our ability to get funding for larger facilities. Okay, well, that's super interesting. All right, so we move to the next topic. Commissioner Items, we have a few.
It's on South Bay Road, just found it.
Okay, well, that's the, there was that Recovery Innovations thing that was, maybe they were, maybe that's something they were looking to open.
Oh, and it's 16 beds, not 16.
Oh, I thought it was 16.
16. Sorry. I was, I, we did the same thing, our. 16, yeah, 16 beds. That makes more sense. But it's.
I think that's, so we kept hearing that Recovery Innovations was going to be opening that, and then they finally decided not to do it.
Well, it's open, yeah.
So now it's for sale.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. That makes, that fits. Because I was like, how could I have not heard about that? That's.
60 beds. Yeah, calm down. I got excited. No, 16.
All right. So our next topic for this check-in is under Commissioner Items, and it's to shoot S2A Restoration Project ILA, which four of us here just sat through a couple of hours of discussion about. And then I saw Travis send an email around, which I was able to quickly scan while I was in the middle of that meeting. So I don't know, County Manager, you want to tee this up? What we need to do?
I think what's, I wanted to call out are two things, and of course, then the commissioners were part of the meeting, can chat it through. But during the recess, our treasurer Jeff talked to the legal team, and he determined that if the state money's pulled out of the other jurisdictions' dollars, that he can be the treasurer and hold those funds. And so that's something that he put forward for the commissioners to consider. Today in the meeting, however, what came up is administrative costs and those needing to be considered. He's not here today. Obviously, he's still at the meeting, I believe, right now. But it would be good for me to talk with him offline and, and share that information as to what he believes the administrative costs are, so that we can weigh that into, as part of the discussion. I just don't know. He mentioned it today in the meeting that there would be administrative costs. What was mentioned by the group was that every other jurisdiction who's contributing is covering, quote-unquote, the overhead. So we just have to figure that out.
It was like, soft cost contributions are being made by other entities, so they were, they were concerned about opening that box and starting to divvy all that up. So to me, it would be useful if Jeff could tell us what the scope of that really looks like, then we know what we're agreeing to do or not. And, and like, one of the participants said, well, if it's, you know, depending on what, if you have to have those costs covered and they're not exorbitant, let us know, and maybe that's something that could be discussed. So I think we just need to kind of get a good estimate of that before we can figure out.
And the other.
He did mention that they were small too. He said, the bank fees are being covered. It would just be like, basically just the base administrative cost for his office. And so, and he did mention that they would be small, so he just has to get us the figures, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, we'll ask him for that. And if he was here, he could probably give us the ballpark so we can invite him to a future meeting. And the other item was a 4.5% escalation as part of the project. That came up about two weeks ago, maybe two and a half weeks ago, when they did a presentation. It was the first time, it appeared to me, that other members of the team heard that number, and so we were just talking through, how did they get to that number? I think that's, to me, why that's important is because in my three months, that was the first time that it looked like the number that they provided us wasn't a set number. It's a, it's a number that they have started with, and that number will grow by 4.5%. Or however much cost increases go up for dredging, and that's just something that, as we entered into the ILA, we need to be aware of. That it was hard for them to pinpoint because this is a very specific type of construction. Dredging is unique to other types of activities. So they're not able to use the same type of inflators or CPIs that you would normally use on other projects. So that's something that's just to be mindful, that there's a provision in the ILA that the group can come back together and renegotiate that. And Robin, I'd love to get your perspective because it appeared to me that that was new information for you also, as we were all learning about it. But if the group would come together and decide if costs are higher, how they, how do they apportion those costs out? Because dredging is an expensive endeavor. Robin, your thoughts?
I understand their perspective on wanting to cover the escalating cost of a, what is essentially a construction project. But I think that part of what Jeff was saying with investing the money, we ought to be able to balance some of that with investment earnings.
Right.
And not just get hit with a full 4% increase in what our contribution would be. So I think that we'll need to take a really careful look at what's in the next version of the contract. Between that and the, at what point does the treasurer release the local funds? That was an interesting part of that conversation. I don't know why we would release all our funds at the very start of a contract when, you know, they're not going to be paying them out in short order. So I want to look at that too.
Versus a milestone approach, like you do in a construction project, you pay milestones rather than paying upfront. We don't know if that's a accounting purpose where they need all the dollars upfront, or it's just something to think through that we can talk offline with Ann about. And my last comment is, it became apparent in today's conversation that our team needs to take a real good look at, at it from an operational standpoint, all the flow charts, some of the conversation, I think because of. Edit from an operational standpoint, all the flow charts, some of the conversation, I think because we weren't in the room. I wasn't following all the way as to what triggers. And at one point when it, with people asking questions and talking, it was hard for me to understand the conversation, but. Um, when you looked at the flow chart, they have some items that when this happens and this triggers this and this dredge event. A question was asked about, um, the port, does the port have to come back to this group on any dredge event? I don't know that I understood their answer, um, and then the topic moved on, so we'll, we'll look at it from an operational flow. Cause effectively, it's going to be like a large capital project and how that capital project either gets paid for. How does it trigger using the reserve? How does it then trigger if there's cost overruns, who's at the seat, being aware of those conversations? That's the operational component of what I perceive and none of it's wrong or bad, it's just needing to be thought through.
Commissioner Edwards?
I guess my concern on the inflationary portion of this is I believe that. We are being kind of soft sold. The additional cost compared to when we started, uh, on this project, because over the last. Well, just since we've come down here, so in the last three years, I think. From the time we took this off the ballot, uh, back at the beginning of the, uh, COVID problem. I think Rick and Tom said the cost has went up of that courthouse process about thirty percent. And I, I don't remember if that's the exact number or not, but it was quite high. And overall inflation in the last four years is twenty percent. They're trying to say, well, this is a little different, this is the lake and sucking the muck and the muck hasn't changed price and all that. But the reality is fuel, wages, material, everything is up twenty percent. And you just better figure it's gonna be twenty or thirty percent more to do the job today than it was gonna be. Three or four years ago, so.
The numbers they have are twenty twenty-two, so it's a little.
Yeah, okay.
Halfway from when.
Okay, so then, then ten percent, say, and they're gonna soft sell it, like four point three and all that. I'm gonna try to be polite here as I'm talking about this stuff and I think they're way underestimating the real cost. And I'll just reflect back to what Tom and Rick told us the other day here about the additional costs for the courthouse. It's not gonna be any different.
So there, there, I won't be able to describe them, but I can tell you there are triggers in the agreement. Maybe if you guys remember how, how they're framed a little better than I do, but if costs go above any amount, I mean. I don't remember how it's framed, but if the costs go, and it's not a very wide window to where it, it basically. Brings everybody back to the table to figure it out again, so we're, you're not binding yourself to something now that's, could be twenty percent more. That is not permitted by the structure of this agreement.
I feel that they are trying to soft sell this, so we don't hit that, uh. Escalator point or whatever it is, cause I don't remember that, but I remember it in the contract that, that we, it wasn't a contract we signed, a memorandum of.
With you at the beginning, yeah, now we're working on the.
And so it's, if you look at that and look at that escalator piece that goes in there. Add in the inflationary amount, it's already over that particular point, whatever that is. I, I don't have those numbers on the tip of my tongue, but I'm using, uh, Tom and Rick's example. Because there is no difference between the labor building the courthouse than there is running the big suction machine or. Whatever else they're gonna be doing, labor's gonna be probably eighty percent of that additional cost. Fuel's gonna be a big piece of that because they're gonna have to be running a lot of equipment. Anyway, uh, I, I think we should be prepared to review any. Numbers that they give us for accuracy, I just don't think they're accurate on, on giving you that lowball number right now. And I don't think we can afford to do a courthouse, so I don't know how we can do that lake, I guess, I'm biased anyway because I think. That was a state problem, the building of the la, that lake was the state, I know they're picking up most of the cost. But I feel the state, when I say the state, that means every taxpayer in the state of Washington should be picking up the same amount that we are. So, anyway, just, just my point.
You're right, Chair, there, there are, like a safety valve, that if costs go up and it becomes cost prohibitive. That the group comes back together to make a decision.
I think we've already hit that amount if you put in the real numbers, that's just all I'm, I'm just throwing out there.
Yeah, I think we felt four point five percent was high.
Not in terms of what it'll cost to do the dredging, but to commit to a four and a half percent per year escalator in our contribution. It is high for us.
Oh, yeah, I, I don't see that we can afford it.
Them, our revenue doesn't grow at that rate.
That's right.
And we have other commitments that we must adhere to.
That's all.
And we weren't, because, yeah, because that was the first time we heard the number, we were just responding to those comments, not necessarily making a. A, um, position of the county, just saying, oh, well, can you walk us through how you got to that number? And they're trying to estimate what they have and where it's gonna go and, Chair, as you mentioned. The agreement, the ILA does have safety measures in place, that the group comes back together. I just wanted all of you to be aware that that was staff's perspective when we met with Ann and the consultant.
Yes, it seems like there'll be different decision points, um, first one is the financial management piece. The board wants to move forward with that, uh, the second piece will be, um, the funding piece of it and, uh. You know, signing on to the ILA.
I, I really think who's gonna be paying attention to this is, uh, the yacht club down there. They have a certain percentage that they're committed to. Their position maybe is the same, they're gonna object when it gets to that point, so. Might be worth touching base with them, they're gonna be watching it.
And they have been involved, they've been having conversations with the, uh, son.
So. I know you had to check out of the meeting for a few minutes, so if you, this is not a good request, let me know, but. I mean, I think the board needs to hear, I think we need to talk through our timeline here because they were really being, you know. We're trying to hit comments through the end of the month, fi, another final meeting in August, you know. September, October, supposed to be sign sealed and delivered is the goal. So these issues are gonna come, I mean, the qua, the county had the most questions about certain numbers and mechanisms. And there were some follow-up, I think that was gonna happen beyond what we said from Jeff about admin costs, but we. Trying to remember what we left open, but I, I guess I want to just get clear on when we're gonna have that information and when we're gonna tee up this discussion. Because the, the board's gonna have to make a decision about this fairly shortly.
Yeah, we've been in discussion from our last meeting to and a half weeks ago, Ann mentioned she wanted to come and present before the board and so. We're working with her and Calenders and, uh, Amy to get that scheduled, asking in advance. Cause there's a, a lot of information, I think we spent over an hour and, um. And we were scratching the surface, so we're, we're asking for an agenda so we can kind of funnel that into a flow of conversation. But we are in the works, Chair, of getting that, that calendar.
And so, uh, one of the pieces that they were gonna get for us were, were those financial figures, uh, and that was one of the requests that I made. Was like, can you please just give us those figures with that four point five escalation? That way we can have at least some numbers that the board can kind of chew on. And then also, we're gonna have to work with Jeff on, uh, what the fiduciary stability looks like. What's going to be the administrative, those soft costs that, uh, the board will need to cover and, um. And so I think that is, is, are gonna be decision points that we will need to make in the next month or so, if that's the. You know, if we are going to be the fiduciary agent, we need to let them know as soon as possible, and if we're not, we also need to let them know. So that's one of the first things that I think we really need to work on and get back to them on. Because if we're not, then they need to find someone else to do it and someone else to kind of cover that. But I, I, I agree, uh, the timeline, you know, it's, they're trying to have something done by the end of the year so they can go to the legislature. Uh, and request that funding, so that's kind of why. It, these conversations are kind of on this tight timeline is, um, is because of, uh. The big request that is going to come from the legislature next year.
I, I guess I just want to reiterate just an example, and that is that. I, I always use our Parks Department, they do a great job, they got five people, all the parks we've got all around the county. Lacy's got thirty-five. What I mean by that is that the municipalities, actually everybody but the county. Has a pretty good revenue source, we don't have a revenue source, that's why we have five people in our Parks Division, that's why Lacy has thirty-five. When Hanford was developed, only about ten years before this lake was created. The United States did not come back to the state of Washington or Benton County and say, hey, we want you guys to be included in the cleanup. Every citizen in the United States pays a little bit towards that nuclear cleanup at Hanford. And that's my philosophy on the way this should be handled. Every citizen in the state of Washington, cause we all pay state taxes, should be paying the same amount of money. Into this particular fix, whatever that amounts to, so, I just like to make that clear, so I'm always consistent.
And they're, they, they're paying a hundred percent of the cost of every taxpayer in Washington, they're paying a hundred percent of the cost to fix it.
Well, except, except what we're gonna be contributing.
What we're contributing to is future maintenance.
I, I know, but it's all.
Zero percent.
It's all part of it.
Are we putting toward the, the fix?
Olympia, Tumwater, the port, the yacht club.
Thurston County.
Everybody's kicking in, nobody's paying, nobody's paying ongoing maintenance over at Hanford. The United States of America, which collects money from all of us, is paying for that. Benton County is not paying any more than a county in New York City.
There's no ongoing maintenance to that site, it's not being.
Well, it's been going on for.
We're using the waterfront.
It's been going on for sixty years.
Anyway, it's very different in my opinion, but.
Anyway.
So what do we need to do, what, is this just informational?
Just informational, um, it was. It was new information today, um, that there's an administrative cost, otherwise I'd be asking you to give a thumbs up to be the fiscal.
Right, okay, so that'll be, that'll be follow-up on that.
We get that information very quickly, Jim.
And then the four point five percent escalation issue was the other one, there was a long discussion about. The mechanics of the dredging transactions vis a vis. The way the marinas were really handled, which is separate versus the way the port was to be handled, which is separate.
Right.
Um, versus the, the main channels, so there are a lot of details there that I didn't. I mean, I was tracking it, I didn't really have an opinion about most of it because it was really not anything that we're gonna be all that involved in.
No, I think it's just a matter of the, the triggers of when the money is spent and understanding that and understanding.
And letting know the steering committee's role.
Exactly.
A lot of talk about, there's gonna be a Deschutes Estuary Steering Committee or DESK, and then a lot of questions about when will they. What will they consider, what will they review versus what'll just happen sort of automatically through the flow chart on the, that's built into the ILA?
And if any of the partners can't come up with their amount of funding and a dredge event doesn't take place, what's the disposition of future funds, that's.
Yeah, we got into a lot of that, so, all right, well. If we've got that covered, any other questions there? And let's go to the, ooh, didn't see that one on the list, the courthouse campus subcommittee update.
We've had several meetings, uh, I think there's been good progress in gathering information, the, the staff are still working on that. Thankful to the stakeholders for their attendance and their participation and information. Right now, we're really working on two major fronts, um, looking at the bond that was taken out, um, working with bond counsel. And our budget team on fiscal capacity, so that as any other new options or current option is looked at, we can have a. Real good understanding of what that fiscal capacity of the county is. And then looking at available alternatives to either a new build or a, uh, the remodel. And we're right now in a two-week gathering period, we needed an extra week to put the information together. So the meeting this week has been postponed, but we will be getting together the following week. Um, and with that, Chair of the committee, any, any comments you wanted to make?
Uh, I just have kind of a request of the non-subcommittee members. And, you know, like, I know you, you came while Ty was gone or Commissioner Menzer was gone. If, uh, you do continue to sit up here, I think it's gonna compel Commissioner Menzer to feel like he should be here as well and then. We no longer have a subcommittee, so I'd like some consideration given to the integrity of the subcommittee. And, uh, if non-subcommittee members attend, they might want to sit in the audience. Just to, and, and just to let the subcommittee cook, right? You know, like, I think the, you're, the, the, the help that you've given in the last two meetings has helped. And like, we got that information from Rick and I think that that's gonna add new flavor to the discussion. But I want to make sure that the subcommittee's integrity is like, is there, and I don't want. It to turn into just a meeting of the whole, because if one shows up, the other's gonna, you know, it probably like, people are well wise and tied there too. And then it just makes it, makes it weird, do you, do you have any thoughts on that?
I would just be like, I mean, not that I would have any problem with you guys, the four of you, but then I would feel like the public would wonder. Like, why didn't I show up to work today? It doesn't look like a subcommittee anymore, it looks like a board meeting that I didn't show up to.
And this is like the first time we've had a subcommittee.
Have that, so if, I, I kind of agree with what Commissioner Miforni are saying, that if you're coming routinely, then I'm gonna probably feel like I have to start coming.
And then, and then it's not a subcommittee any longer, it is a work session and then, so then, there's no point in having a subcommittee, let's just have a.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I guess I kind of agree with, uh, Commissioner Mejia. I think this is such an important topic for the citizens of Thurston County. It's gonna be one of the bigger financial decisions that we make. We, I see as the county commission, it'll change some by the time, I know it's gonna change some by the time, cause I'm not gonna be here after the end of this year. So there's gonna be new players, uh, there's gonna be a lot to do. I personally don't think the subcommittee, uh, is necessarily the right way to do it. I think everything we do should be out in the open, one hundred percent, so the public can see it. I think all the, the elected commissioners should be here, myself. Uh, all the time, because we're representing all the citizens in Thurston County. And it's gonna be a big deal by the time we come up with a solution that we can afford. Cause we've got very limited access to revenue that's coming in, I don't see that changing anytime soon. Uh, there are some solutions that we might be able to come up with. I know Robin has stated that we could have a couple other maybe alternatives to, uh, the funding sources that we might look at. I don't know what those are, they're coming up yet, but I really think that this is too important. To allow it to, to kind of, uh. Uh, fester, if you will, with a subcommittee that's gonna come back and then we're gonna have lots of discussions. And there's been a lot of talk about, we should try to come up with something we can all agree on. And I'm gonna, I'm just gonna use the example of the vote for five commissioners. We all agreed on that, we agreed with the port commissioners on the same thing, past port commissioners, past county commissioners. Everybody got together and said, this makes sense, maybe doesn't make sense for today, but it makes sense for tomorrow, down the road. And that's what we're doing, we're trying to fix something for tomorrow, we're not fixing it for today. And I really think we need all hands on deck and, uh, come up with some solutions, so. I think the subcommittee kind of was okay while all of us were not available. I, I, I think that was great, but now we're all available and I don't think we need the whole subcommittee thing. Matter of fact, I think we can mark it up to experience on what we're gonna do about subcommittees somewhere into the future on other items. But there's other subcommittee issues that probably. subcommittee issues that probably are not quite as important as this. Let's just say animal control and what we're going to do on the financial end of can we support this or not? Are we going to do something about the licensing stabilizing, stabilizing licensing fees, which we already did? But there's those kind of things that we can work on in the subcommittees. These big options, like a courthouse and multi-millions of dollars into the future, I think it behooves us to include everyone to represent all the citizens in Thurston County.
It is completely transparent. It is completely open. It is being filmed. It is open to everybody. And we did all make a decision to establish the subcommittee so to get rid of it. That would take an action of all of us as well. But it's set up. All I'm asking is that we let the subcommittee do the exploratory work. And at the end of the day, the subcommittee is not going to make the decision for the county. It's going to make a recommendation, maybe, to us. And then.
We're just presenting fresh out options.
Or just, yeah, hey, we didn't come to any conclusions, but here's all the information we gathered. And so I'm just asking that you two gentlemen, let us do the exploratory discussions. And then in a short order, we'll, we'll come back with something more for you all.
Well, let me just, let me comment on, we're being completely open. We're not being completely open, because we are not live streaming subcommittee meetings. What we're doing is we're recording subcommittee meetings, and then we're asking whomever to come to the county and put in a FOIA request.
No, they're posted.
No, no, they're not posted. You said they were posted, but I don't think they're being posted immediately. I think they have to be asked for.
So when we started, just Commissioner to clarify, I think, when we started, they weren't posted. But now the, there's a website that already existed about the courthouse. Our communications team has updated that web, it's a splash page from the county's webpage, updated it, and they've now posted the videos there.
So you can watch the videos. We're putting out a press release on every minute we do.
And is that going out now?
Oh, is it?
It was just going to be the minutes that were going to be posted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, see, that's, so we are not, yeah, we're not there yet.
Okay, well, they're being, they're going to be posted. So everybody can access it. There's no hidden agenda.
When you say it's going to be posted, is it going to be posted within ten days, within one day, two days? If we livestreamed it, we're not creating any more workload for staff. Amy now is the one that's going to be the recipient of those phone calls, because I, I think it said in one of the news releases, get hold of Amy, I think, clerk of the board, I think. And then she'd respond back. So, okay, if there's seven requests, I don't know that there will be. There's not going to be a lot of interest initially, but some there will be. So then that creates more work for her possibly. I don't know. If we've got it all fixed, so it's automatic, a citizen can just go onto the website, courthouse, subcommittee, that's it. And that's what I just heard we're doing. Is that it?
So we have the webpage up, and it's always been up, but we've added to the one that existed prior. It has all the old information about the original go-through of this process. And then we have a opening about the subcommittee, and then the main points for each of the meetings. And then the meeting notes are going to be attached to the dates. If you want the recordings as well, we're happy to put those up as well.
See, they're not on there yet.
Well, yeah, and I think honestly that the subcommittee decided not to post them online, that it could be done through public records requests. And correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Claus, on that. But we decided to record them, and if any person wanted them, they could make a public records request. That was my, then that's why they have not been posted.
And I don't think that's being open with the public.
It is being open with the public. The meeting is open. Anyone can come in and join. Anyone can make a public records request on the item and on the subject, and they'll get the information.
When, when will they get it?
They'll get it.
Ten days?
Regular timeline as a public.
I know folks have already requested. Is that correct?
Yes, I've received two requests.
Yeah, so people are requesting, and we are sending them the information.
You know, we're going to ask the media to be supportive of us as we move forward on this issue. I don't think we ought to be restricting any information about anything we're talking about. If we're going to be asking for the public's cooperation and for the media's cooperation to get the message out, we can put out news releases all day long. I don't know how much that reaches, but not as much as if you're totally being open with the public.
Well, all the information is going to come to the Board of County Commissioners, where they're going to review all the items, and those are going to be livestreamed. And so all the subcommittee is doing is requesting information from staff to bring to the full Board of County Commissioners. We're asking for all the financial options. We're weighing out all the options. What buildings are available? Like, we're, that's the role of the subcommittee, is to ask for options. That way, the Board of County Commissioners is not spending all this time, that they have that information available when it comes to making a decision on which way we're going to go. The subcommittee is not, we might provide like a recommendation of like, hey, like, you know, based on all this information that we've seen, maybe like this is the way to go. And, you know, at that time, we can have this full conversation. But all that we're doing right now from staff is giving them the time to gather all the possible information that the board might need to bring to the full county commissioners. So I, this whole thing that we're not being open, the meetings are all open. All the stakeholders have been attending those meetings. They're being recorded. And we're putting out news releases. And then all of that information is going to come back to the Board of County Commissioners. And those are being livestreamed. So I don't, I don't know.
Well, the subcommittee was formed, as Commissioner Fornier said, and maybe Commissioner Edwards only supported it because we were about to start the recess, and that's fair. But now we're back in recess. So if he, if you're making a motion to disband the subcommittee, then.
I have regular media second for that.
We could certainly, that could certainly be done.
I just think it's terribly important that we be as open as possible, overly open, if that's what it means, to the public and to the media.
Sure.
Yes.
If I could add a comment, I, I agree with Commissioner Edwards about openness and transparency in government. I think all of us sitting at this table agree with that, and that's why we're here, and that's why we were elected. But I also think that we owe the public streamlined conversations on big topics when it's possible. And I will say, in the few subcommittee meetings that we've had, I've learned more about the history of the complex than I've ever been able to learn in a work session, because conversations go quickly. Well, they go, you know, more quickly than a work session would. All of our stakeholders have either shown up or sent a representative, and that's been helpful. It's also helped to streamline conversations one-on-one with those stakeholders after the meetings end. I can just pop over to somebody who might have been sitting in the crowd and get their thoughts if they want to add anything or if they want me to know anything. That's helped me with scheduling walkthroughs of the courthouse with stakeholders. So there have been a lot of benefits of the subcommittee for me personally, as a new commissioner who hasn't been here for the years and years of lengthy conversations. It does kind of slow the meetings down and prevent us from moving forward in a timely manner when we're having conversations about issues that have come up in the past that have already been handled. So I would request that we continue with the subcommittee, because it has been so beneficial. And I've heard a lot of new creative ideas that haven't come up during work sessions. I think because the dynamic of the subcommittee is, like I said, it's streamlined, and it offers stakeholders and subcommittee members a platform to discuss things in a way that feels, I don't know, more supportive, I guess, because we're all here and it's, it is open to the public, but it's not being livestreamed. So people can actually speak up. Like, we've mentioned, when we formed the subcommittee in the first place, that stakeholders may or may not feel comfortable speaking up in a work session while they're being livestreamed, because they're not used to being livestreamed like we are. So there have been several benefits of the subcommittee, which were discussed when we decided to form it in the first place. So I would really appreciate, like, keeping the subcommittee in place and moving forward with it. And I also agree with Commissioner Fornier's request that people who show, you know, if commissioners show up that are non-subcommittee members, that they sit in the audience, so that the members who are voting representatives on the subcommittee can get the conversations, get through these conversations. Because like I mentioned at the last meeting, there were several creative ideas. Commissioner Mahia brought up some ideas that I hadn't even thought of, but she wasn't able to get through them because she was being interrupted over and over again. And so I, I mean, I would have really liked to get through some of those ideas, because I think that we are moving in a positive direction, and we're moving the needle forward on coming up with alternative solutions. But we can't get through those conversations if we have additional comments that are related to past issues that have already been handled. So I'm benefiting a lot from this subcommittee. I know stakeholders have mentioned to me that they really appreciate the efforts of the subcommittee members and the focus on this. And I just think moving these conversations back to work, like a work session format, would really slow it down. And it's a time-sensitive issue. We're spending the budget that has already been allocated, and we're going through that. And then we're pausing to like, question whether we should continue moving forward with the remodel. And work session conversations just take so much longer and require so much more. And then our stakeholders may not feel comfortable in those settings. And so, like I said, there's been a lot of benefits for, for me personally. And I just think that we should keep the format the same. And I don't see it as restricting any information from the public, because the meetings are open. And if you can't attend, you can make a public records request. And I think there's some benefit to that component as well, because a lot of community members don't know how to make a public records request. And if they're interested in this, we're sending out media releases, and then they can learn how that process is handled as well, so that the public knows that we are transparent as a government, because those public records requests, there is an avenue for that. So maybe they're learning new ways to get involved with county government that they didn't know before. So I think that there are a lot of benefits to maintaining the format as it stands now.
I appreciate what you're all saying. I, I'm getting a lot out of it as well. So I really appreciate what you're saying. Now, just being a bit of a rebel, if I didn't think that there was absolute transparency, and I, you know, and consensus is what decides how we do things. But if I was in a position where I, you know, you guys were meeting, and it wasn't being posted, I would request it, and I would put it on my county commissioner Facebook page for everybody to see. And then problem solved. It's very easily accessible. So there's, if you don't like what the, sorry, Commissioner Edwards, if you don't agree, there's ways that you can kind of solve the problem. But all I'm asking is that the two non-subcommittee members let the subcommittee work, unless we take, and unless we take a vote to dissolve the subcommittee, the next time we come in here, I will politely ask that non-subcommittee members sit in the audience with the stakeholders. And at every meeting, I have asked the stakeholders for participation and comments. So you'd have opportunities, Commissioner Menzer, if you sat there. But I would kindly ask that let the subcommittee do a thing. And that's, that's all I'm saying. So we're going to continue it. And just know that, you know, I will politely ask that next time. And, you know, that's, I think that's me doing my job as a chair, based on some of the feedback that we've heard.
Commissioner Edwards?
I guess if you were to go ask anybody in the general public what a FOIA request means, Freedom of Information Act, whatever you want to refer to it as. And, you know, we're doing open government. You can get a FOIA request and take a look at everything we're doing, if you cannot come and attend in person. A lot of people are working, they can't come, for a lot of other reasons they can't come. The simplicity of live streaming and making it available, to me, is so simple. That's what open government is.
And I made an argument in favor of it at the subcommittee meeting. I asked for exactly what you're asking. That wasn't what the majority decided. And that's, that's, that's what it is. But I also don't want, like, later when this comes up, when we bring it to the board, for you to go, well, I'm not in favor of this because you didn't livestream it. That'll be, that'll be unfortunate, because we're, I mean, we're.
That will be unfortunate.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, it's a game.
I do think we ought to do everything we can to keep everybody in the game. And I think we ought to do everything we can to keep the public informed, so they can't come back and say, oh, yeah, that was an open meeting, but I couldn't come because I had to work. I tried to look it up on the computer. I couldn't. What's wrong with you people? How come you can't livestream it? Then it's easy for everybody to see. I can just, I'm being the devil's advocate for an argument there. I don't see why, everybody's an adult here. We can make our statements. We can talk. We, staff feels just fine as far as answering any questions that we might ask of them. This whole business about it should not be livestreamed, because people will be free to talk. I'm just not buying it. If they aren't free to talk, they ought to stay home. I mean, that's the best way I can put it. If they don't feel that they can talk because we're livestreaming, so be it. This is open government. We should be available to the public all the time, whenever possible. I realize we need to go into executive session, real estate issues, financial issues, personnel issues, negotiations and unions. But I truly think everything else we do should always be the utmost available, the maximum available, whatever that means.
There's.
So I tell you.
There's no support for disbanding the subcommittee. And it sounds like the majority, there is a second, secondary issue of whether to livestream subcommittee meetings. And it sounds to me from the chair that that was voted on by the subcommittee.
And I can bring it up again at the next meeting.
And it could be redressed at the next subcommittee meeting. Commissioner Edwards' position could be re-discussed by the committee if they wanted to. But that's the democratic process that we have. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Then as a final issue on this topic, I'll, I'll put everybody on the spot, I guess. I'm going to make a motion that all of our meetings, when there is a majority of the board in attendance, should be livestreamed. I want to give the public every bit of information I can. So I don't know if I'll get a second on that or not. Maybe nobody else agrees with me, and they don't think we ought to have open government. But that's my motion as of right now, that we should livestream every majority meeting. So let's see where that goes.
Well, we've had that debate many, many, many times, and we're down, we're down to like, so, we're down to like, I think, only one kind of meeting that's not livestreamed or normal.
Well, we're not doing these subcommittees.
Just a planning session, monthly planning session.
Okay.
And then, subcommittee's new.
Okay.
And that was up to the subcommittee, and they decided to do what they wanted to do. But, I mean, we've had.
So the subcommittee members don't want the public to know what we're doing? Is that what you're saying?
Not at all.
Oh.
Do not put words under the.
Well, every once in a while, I get a lawyer trick that, you know, he outsmarts me on one of these questions himself. You tricky little devil. Anyway, okay. I mean, it's, it's a media issue. I'm not going to, I'm not going to harp on it any longer at this point. I'm satisfied.
So that's a preliminary issue that Commissioner Fornier brought up, and I think we've beaten that one down. So what else? Is it just kind of letting us know where things stand? And what's the next, when is the next meeting? And what will be addressed so that the public can attend if they so desire?
It's Friday, July twenty-sixth at three P M.
Okay, and what's, what's expected to be on that agenda?
Expected to be on the agenda is a report out from our budget team on our fiscal capacity. Also, we will have some information from our bond counsel on the disposition of the current bond, and a discussion about what are the options there. It's also anticipated that there would be an executive session, so that we can continue the conversation about potential real estate property.
And I guess this is a question that I have. What, given where, what we thought we could accomplish in a certain amount of time, and what, and where we are now, I mean, we've paused, I mean, what's the status of everything? I mean, we pause, is something, has something been stopped from base to where we do? And how long do we anticipate that stoppage to be before the board's going to need to, you know, has that timeline lengthened based on what's gone on so far? Or is it, we still kind of in the same pool of water?
Rick has paused any additional work, but they were continuing to do some work to get it to a certain point, I believe.
But we don't have authority for the funding, so it's all paused.
It's all paused then. So they took a thirty-day pause so that we.
Thirty-day pause, right. Okay, that's what I was remembering. And so, are, when does that thirty days expire?
After the last meeting. So our.
Twenty, after the twenty-sixth. So there's one more meeting within the thirty days.
Yes.
And then we'll have to see if we need to continue to pause, keep things paused, because there's more to be.
Yeah, I think what we'll need to do is come back. Yeah, I think what we'll need to do is come back to the full board and have, have a discussion about where the project is at, and what we've been able to accomplish from a research standpoint, determine if that's enough research to look at alternative options or not.
Commissioner Edwards, I saw your hand.
Yeah. I thought we were going to have at our next meeting, a public-private partnership discussion. That was the request from the first meeting. I was able to, I was not able to attend the first meeting, subcommittee meeting, myself, but I did review all the material.
That's part of the conversation with bond counsel, about what our capacity is, because our financial capacity determines what dollars we can bring to the table, that then we'll say, can we set a private partnership up, and what does that look like?
That's, okay, so we'll get more information at that point on that. And then, you mentioned real estate, so I hesitate bringing this up, are you, are we gonna talk about that?
Yeah, we can have...
I mean, that, that was my understanding, that that was on the agenda, the other day with the chair of the subcommittee.
What are you holding up? Yeah, he's holding up something that Rick distributed. You probably have any chance to go through your emails. But Commissioner, what was requested is for Rick to send that information out, and so that's what he did.
That's what this is.
That's what that is.
Okay.
If, you know, it's not, we weren't necessarily planning to go through that in detail, unless it's requested by subcommittee members, or if it's a request from the board, we can add that to the agenda. I don't think Rick will have any problem covering that information.
Okay, Commissioner Fornier? There was a, the other component about, you know, those that remain over there, minimal amounts of renovations to make it habitable for the next four or five years, for those that remain. Commissioner Mahia and I went and kind of did a walk through, do we wanna talk about this?
Yeah.
Went and kind of did like, just walked through building one, and, like, anything that comes back and that talks about, you know, well, we need to spend $5 million on making these usable, I'm gonna be really critical of, it basically looks like you could just turn the lights on over there and move anybody in that needs to be in, especially building one. There's furniture still there, there's even pictures on the walls. Like, you could move a prosecutor's office in there, and they would probably be pretty happy for a while. It's not, you know, it's, it's not that bad in there as far, I mean, I suggest, what I'm suggesting is, you know, if you get a chance, go over there and take a look. It's, it's not a scary building, the jail's scary, if we're trying to move people in there, but especially building one, it is, it is not gonna be a horrible place to put folks, and I really don't think it should cost much money to make it usable for, for an office space.
Yeah, Rick will be able to speak to some things that he's been working on, is just options and creative ideas, but I think that's gonna be a good discussion as well.
Okay, so we'll look forward to the July 26th meeting, and thank you for the work for this by the subcommittee, and non-subcommittee. Sounds like you were working too. Members, all right. Commissioner, items, anything else to address this afternoon?
Oh, I was gonna talk about livestreaming, but I think I'll let it lie.
Yeah, I already covered that, covered that to a degree. No? Okay, then I guess we've come to the end of the agenda, we're adjourned. See everybody in the morning.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.